Good evening. Please turn off your phones. Welcome to the special meeting for March 7th, 2024, meeting of Eureka Springs Historic District Commission. I'm Dee Bright. Chair Commissioners present tonight are Maggie Hay, Christine Sanamore, Frank Green, Susan Daniel, and Debbie Davis. We have a call for business. Eureka Springs Historic Commission is empowered by the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to issue a certificate of appropriateness for alterations of exterior architectural features, demolition and new construction within the boundaries of Eureka Springs Historic District. The HDC uses Eureka Springs Historic District Guidelines and the U.S. Department of Interior Standards for the rehabilitation of historic buildings as the basis for our decisions. The Commission can take the following actions on application: approval, approval with modifications, denial, or deferral for more information. Appeal of denial may be made to the Circuit Court. Public comments will be heard on each agenda item as it is called. Other public comments will be heard during the public comment period. Are there any, well, there aren't any changes because this is a special meeting, so we're only discussing one Frisco. I don't know, we have a new sheet. One Frisco Holden owner applicant demolition of collapsed structure. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as read.
Second. Christine made the motion, Debbie seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Approval of applicant, applications does not excuse applicants, owner, or agent from the, from, I lost my place, compliance with any other applicable codes, ordinances, or policies of the City of Eureka Springs. Okay. Do we need Judy to come up and introduce herself and all again tonight?
If anybody has any questions for her, or if she has any other information to present to us, I think.
Otherwise, we can discuss. Okay. We did have a site visit earlier at 4:00 PM, and trying to do this timely, we did a special meeting for 6:45, so we can try to move on with this project. Any comments, discussion, guys?
On the site visit?
Yeah, what are we gonna do with this application?
What did you guys think?
Do you need Kyle to reread the?
We need a motion before we can discuss.
Yeah, let's take a motion.
Did you bring last night's package?
I move that the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission issue a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed work at one Frisco based on the agreed upon summary of the facts as presented.
Do I have a motion? Oh, Frank made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Christine made the second. Okay, discussion.
All right, now we can discuss.
I would like to discuss the trucks getting through where Judy, you know, the, between those two big trees were Judy's houses. I mean, what do we think about a truck getting through there?
Are you talking about on Frisco?
On Frisco.
I don't think a truck can, can it? I think that's where he would have to take.
He said it would be difficult.
To get through from Frisco?
Yeah, he said it would, the contractor said it would be difficult to make that turn. I don't think it's impossible, but he said it would be more difficult than coming in from Washington.
Right.
My concern with this is that we don't have definitive property lines marked, and my only fear is, well, if he came in from the Frisco side, we know that Judy owns that property, and he wouldn't be infringing on anybody else's property rights. I'm not sure about the other way.
Gotcha.
That's my only concern.
Right, we don't have any markers, no boundary, pens.
Well, I think Judy said there were some markers. She showed us a spot where she pointed out some daffodils. She said from here over there is her line of her property.
It is.
I saw that.
Judy brought, guys, Judy brought her survey when she bought the property in 2011. I looked it up on data scout. She bought the property. Did you buy it all, Judy?
I bought a lot, I'm discussing, sorry.
Sorry.
Good evening, I'm Judy Holden. Thank you for the special meeting. I bought that property in 2017, the four lots. I bought the rest on 2011.
Judy, I have a question. Washington, where Washington goes up, where does your property start? At, at the edge of Wa, the street?
It's, yes.
Okay.
She wants us to.
Right on the corner of Washington.
Pass this around.
It seems like the contractor last night discussed that he wouldn't have to mark, make any trees go away, other than a few little saplings. And when Judy walked it today, it looked like that to me. Isn't it, can't we just, I guess we can't mandate, but I mean, could we insist upon seeing exactly where he's gonna go and direct him? If he goes up Washington Street, that's a street.
Then again, like Christine or Debbie once said, exactly where the property lines are. I do, I mean, I see what that, when that passes on to you.
Okay.
But it would sure be nice if there was little flags, but that would be expensive, sure.
Because I was thinking if he starts to make a turn at the top of where the berm is, you know, then, I don't know.
And I understand the lady's concern about her stained glass, but.
It's, it seems like it's quite a ways away. I didn't, I didn't see where she was pointing to today.
Well, I think if they, if he does go up Washington, that some, you know, some kind of accommodation should be made to the, to the residents.
I'm gonna pass this over to you two. So, that brown building that was facing, that end was facing us is here, and then she's got this rack here on that end that has all of her glass in it.
Okay.
I'll pass this around for everybody.
I have one from last night, but I.
And today, when she was pointing, you could just see a little bit of it sticking up, but there was these black rod, did you see those two black wrought iron things? They're on the other side of that, real close to that building. I could see an edge of glue sticking up.
Yeah.
She's got a lot of stained glass.
She's got a lot of stained glass.
She's been in the business a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Washington isn't even on this map.
What?
Washington isn't even on that map.
I thought it.
Really?
It shows Frisco kind of rounding that corner right there, and it's Washington.
Oh, you, does it say?
Yeah. I thought it was.
It's the red arrow.
Yeah.
I didn't see Washington on there either.
It's not. It's not. But the red arrow is just one Frisco.
Yeah, it doesn't say Washington.
No. It's on that one that Maggie has on her hand. Judy, this needs to go to Maggie and Susan.
Would it be a real hardship to come in from Frisco?
He told me he would have to build a road.
Build a road?
Build a road.
Why would that be different?
When you turn in the light, he'd have to come right up, right up the middle of all the lots or whatever, and this has already cost me thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
So it's city's request, so.
He can't, for sure, he can't make that turn.
No.
Judy, he's saying, so on your property, on down where the daffodils, build a road in there, or on Frisco?
Whatever the city wants him to do, but it will cost me.
Because on Frisco.
That road where the daffodils, where her truck and car were parked, that's property, I think, I don't think it's a back alley. We don't have back alleys here, and I think Sonny Car, the corner house has the lot right up, they just originally built that road so he could park at the back. And then the next one where the old trailer is, and nobody's living there, they extended that road and parked in the back. So it's not, it's each their own lots, and Sonny just let them come in and out when he was alive and lived in that corner house.
I did hear somebody ask a question, I think to Kyle today, coming in Frisco, if they went, and it may have been your husband, Debbie, if they went straight on up and then back, or.
Or pulled up in.
Pulled up in there and all, I don't know if Bob can get his trucks down the other way and come in. He was the contractor on the house that my brother and I built. So my area where he came in is not the easiest in the world either. He does great work, and he's very conscientious, I have to say that about the man. He is wonderful. So I don't, he doesn't think he can pull in there pretty well.
I mean, he's been dragging that.
Don't you think the biggest noise would have been the house falling in? It needs some huge, huge rockets already.
Is it, is it a truck, or is it a trailer that's gonna be pulled up in there to, to take that debris away?
Trucks.
A truck?
He just brought his, yeah, he brought his dump trucks in. He didn't have to haul anything away from my place, but he did have to bring in lots of dirt and his equipment and stuff. So I don't know about the huge dump truck that she's telling us about. I don't know if it's something bigger than I saw.
I completely understand about her wanting to protect Washington if she's having to take care of it, but he also said to us last night that he would take care of that. And I feel like there's a reputation he has, he's a very, very well-known contractor.
I think he would take care of it. I mean, I really, for my personal use of the man, yes. I just don't have.
And he did say if it's raining, he even told me that personally, and if it's raining, I'm not doing it.
I have another question, it's kind of a restating of my question before. So if the truck comes up Washington and turns toward the house, is that your land once he's off Washington?
Yes.
Where is, you can see it on the plan. Let me see this one right here. Well, where that, where it's kind of dug out, I think is right here.
Yeah.
You know, because we had to walk quite a ways.
Yeah.
So it's just gonna.
These are hers.
Yeah, it's just gonna be coming right up here to the corner of that land.
He's directly onto my land. The minute he's off Washington, he's right onto my land.
This one does not have Washington.
And Rhonda's property doesn't go very far up the hill past her house.
No, I think it's just right behind.
It's just where she, where she described today was pretty short, so we would be, we would be, the truck would be.
I would just want to avoid conflict at all costs, you know, with.
Yeah, adversarial things are not good.
Happy neighbors, good neighbors.
Yeah.
The house is on Frisco Street, isn't it?
It is.
It's at the end of Frisco Street.
But it's on the corner of Washington.
It's closer to Frisco.
So that lady's down.
So she is right here, and then Joan Singer's house is right here. And then this is where.
That lot also abuts Washington Street.
Yeah. But where, so Washington, 73 is your house, right? Yeah. Could you come, be sure I've got this turned right? Is this your house?
Yes.
Okay. So Judy's house is here, where it says 73, yes. And then.
And the house.
Right, there's the other one.
That's the house that's being demoed, right here. Okay.
Not the little X there?
Put a little scratch on it.
Well, it's not on that corner, because it's, you know.
No, I just was gonna make a little X.
Yep.
So we know this is the house inside there.
Where the exits, that's the house in question.
Will you pass that back down in a minute?
You got it?
Please.
So on the subdivision map, it would be lot number five, where you say the house is located?
So there's actually.
Yes, five to eight.
Yeah.
Five, six, seven, eight. I said one to four.
So it covers more than one lot. I don't know how big these lots are.
Generally, forty by eighty is the historic lots.
This is, this is Judy's own home, and this is where the demo is. So like if he just pulls up Frisco.
Hey Kyle, you said that, the city said it was up to us to determine access.
I, so the building inspector, I can read their emails one more time.
Yeah, I did read the emails from the building inspector, and he said that the access, he thought the access would be easier from Washington, but it was actually closer to Frisco, or what's it called?
Frisco.
Frisco.
Yeah.
I wanna call it Frisco.
Yeah, so a bird's eye view, definitely closer to Frisco, but like we were talking about last night, there's that berm in the hill and the trees that kind of block that Frisco side. And just from what I saw today, trees and stuff like that right there would need to go to planning for approval for removal of the trees, and so it would take that extra process to access it from that side, I feel like.
But not if he goes up Washington?
Right, so.
Because there's only the small tree.
Yeah, I think the biggest tree that he would have to remove is that one that was kind of in the middle. It's, I think that's the one that he was talking about last night, so.
It just seems strange to me that we're having to decide that access and not the city.
Right.
Well, tree cuts, that would be Jacob, right?
So the city just changed the tree ordinance, and so unless they're threatening a structure, sidewalk, something like that, it needs to go to the planning commissioner for approval for tree cuts now.
Unless it's gonna fall on your house.
Yeah.
And then somebody can.
Well, if they're four inches or smaller, they can be cut.
Right. And that's officially Judy's tree, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the four inch tree.
Was it even four inches?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, but I know we can cut down something four and under. And that really wasn't the substance of my question, though. My question is, why are we, as a Historic District Commission, determining access when, in reality, in my view, I think all we should be determining is whether or not the house can be torn down, which is obvious.
Yes.
Then I think the city should determine which way the access.
And that makes sense to me, too. So we sent out the notifications to the neighbors, and the neighbors have asked that we take that into consideration. The Commission can put conditions on approving COAs, so if we want to have him submit a more detailed plan before he proceeds, or if we want to have him meet with Jacob and Simon before he proceeds, but the environment surrounding that house could fall under HCC purview. And so that's basically what the neighbors are asking us to look at, is the environment around the house, not the, everybody agrees the house needs to come down.
Yeah, even the neighbors agree that it needs to come down.
Yeah.
It's just how do we, how do you get there?
How do you get rid of it?
And I think, I'm with Debbie, HDC is really, whether the house comes down or not, and Jacob, he writes, he just talked, they've all addressed whether coming in, nobody's told us, like, this house is condemned. I mean, I would assume that's what Jacob would tell us, it's condemned, it's a hazard, it has to come down. We just vote on whether it can come down or not. That's what I see as our.
That statute's been set before. I mean, we've, you know, gone, gone through all of this before, and then finally gotten down to, okay, the bottom line is, do we demo the place?
For this one, there's just no question that it's.
Oh, the house is condemned.
The precedent has already been set, is what I was trying to say.
If there were some historic elements, question here, you know, on either access, then I could see where we might be involved. Otherwise, I think this is a building inspector, city decision on which direction the access is, you know, more optimum for removal.
And I think that's why we keep coming back to the same issues, like, where's the property lines on? Why are we deciding Washington or Frisco? It just doesn't seem like that's, you know, supposed to be our purview.
Yeah.
We're just supposed to.
The building inspector should be down here with us.
Is this a historic home? Are we trying to save it?
He should determine which is the safest route to take to haul this house out.
But that isn't our purview, is it?
No.
Not which is the safest, the safest, whether it comes down or not, yes.
I think there's no question on whether or not it needs to come down. It does.
But the city, according to the plan, states it doesn't exist. So who's gonna make the decision?
Well, I think when you look at any structure in the city limits, though, that needs to be a building inspector decision. You know, he has experience with all those big equipment and everything. I think he's gonna be able to tell.
And he did.
The safest route for it to come out.
And he did last week, that's why Rhonda ended up getting a tag on her truck, because he had asked her three times, different times, to move the truck, because it was parked right in that, and she finally has, so.
Yeah.
She knows, and she stated last night that it was parked on the street.
I'm gonna solve all this problem for us. The application, if you guys have all pulled out your application, the scope of work, demolition of collapsed structure.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That is what we're supposed to decide.
Not the removal of such.
Well, the scope of work here, if you guys will look at your deal, it says demolition of collapsed structure. I can read the summary of facts real quick. Information is unknown, does not appear on maps, property files or on state survey forms. Residential wooden structure deteriorated beyond. Migration?
Mitigation.
Oh, mitigation, yeah.
I'm sorry. Located across Frisco Street from one Frisco who is current property owner. The building official has determined it is a safety hazard. Questions of landscape, site, environment treatment. Now, the number five, Kyle, did that come up after all the letters from the neighbors?
Yes.
The question of the landscape, of all the properties properly, as we saw today, of all those property things are, then there's nothing landscape to really save, I don't think, but then you guys decide of the site and environment treatment, and we saw all the.
But does that fall under taking the debris away, environment treatment? What does that mean?
Well, as we saw today, there's buzzards making homes.
Thing is, do we decide to demo it? And we think, yes, so far, and then, but how the structure goes away isn't us.
Well, the environment, the only thing I can see of it is when we saw all those buzzards today, with the, raising their babies in there and so forth, and have been for years, apparently. That's hazardous to the grounds. I mean, we know bird droppings, chicken droppings, all of that is not good for people's health. So that would be the environment, it needs to come out of there.
Right.
But even after the house is demolished and all, it's apparently in the ground and all. I went home and read some on this, and I'm like.
So it's like a hazardous waste.
Yeah.
Because of the buzzards.
And they're going to raise it down to the ground? They're gonna take the foundation out?
Is it on a slab?
No. I saw concrete blocks.
Concrete block and rock. I looked at it.
There's so many houses in Eureka that aren't on anything, so.
Yes. That makes me think it may not be historic. There's not a lot of. No, there was, there was, it looked like, at one time, maybe it had been an outbuilding, and then they just added on to it the bathroom section there that we saw. It kind of looked like it had a barn roof, it kind of had a.
Like a garble.
Yeah, so an outbuilding at one.
Hello?
Okay, I'm glad you agree.
The ghosts don't wanna, the ghost. Did you have something to say, Judy?
Well, is this an application? You guys feel we should just refer back to the building inspector?
I think, I, I think that we need to approve that the building comes down. I don't think it's our place for us to determine how it's removed.
To remove it.
Which direction it gets removed.
Right.
I think we need to leave that up to.
The building inspector.
The people that know what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
As far as construction and materials and things like that.
And trees coming down.
Whether they take a truck in there, or whether they have to end up taking bulldozer in there. You know, I don't, I don't know that, and probably we'll never know that by that time.
Yeah, right.
But I think we should vote on whether or not we demo it.
So are you calling the question?
Yes.
Okay. Maggie called the question, do I have a second?
Second.
Maggie made the motion, Christine seconded. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries five zero. Now, we vote on the demolition. Frank made the motion, Christine seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Frank, if you will sign that COA for me, I will fill it out and get it to her.
Okay. And adjournment. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out for a site visit today and for coming at 6:45. So now adjournment, please.
Frankie likes to do that.
Yeah.
All in favor?
No, stay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Debbie made the motion, Maggie seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
This goes back to Dee.
Thank you, everybody.
Would it be possible for me to get back those two?
Yeah.
Maggie, who seconded that?
Maggie.
Maggie seconded, Debbie made it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate coming out.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Judy.
Good luck.
I'm used to writing it. We're adjourned.